Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Border County Commissioners Regular Workshop for Tuesday, February 8th, 2022 to order. I want to welcome everybody here today. We'll begin our meeting with the invocation given by Commissioner Larry Harvey and the pledge by Commissioner Turner. Please stand if you're able.
Let's bow together. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for a wonderful day, a day we've never experienced before in our life, a day that we can help our fellow man. And Father, let every decision that be made today be done in order and indecency today. Let us have your mind and your will as we look for the future of Putnam County and try to promote Putnam County in a positive way. We thank you for the men and women that are here, the people that are serving, and our staff. And we thank you for all the things good that you do for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Okay, we've got a minute to kill. Larry, do you want to tell your joke?
No.
Okay.
You probably need to turn off the camera.
But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A little levied. He never heard a thing.
No, it didn't.
Not a thing, buddy.
Well, you've got public comment. You don't think that...
Yeah, I guess I could do that. We'll go ahead and move to public comment. This is the time for public comment on any agenda items. Any individuals wishing to make any comments on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will... It's a long minute. Okay, 2:05. We'll recess the Board of County Commission meeting and convene Port Authority workshop.
You're killing me.
And, um, sorry about that. They got new hearing days? All right, we'll open up for public comment on Port Authority items. Any citizens wish to comment on Port Authority items? They will close that portion, move down to item B. General discussion on any Port Authority items. Administrator Suggs, any updates from this morning?
Actually, just one, and I don't have a copy of it, but there was another positive article that came out in one of our news journals during the day about how it is progressing greatly through the legislature. So I'll have that article printed out and sent to each of you.
Okay, and you said this morning that you have an article ready to go to the newspaper?
Yes, sir. I got a little press release from that conversation from this morning. So what I'll do is I'll update it just a little bit and send that out to the five of you folks, post it on our website as well, send it out to the newspaper.
Okay, so it'll go in the paper this week?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Well, it'll be sent to the paper this week, sir.
Okay, all right. Any comments on Port Authority items from the commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn the Port Authority workshop and reconvene the B O C C workshop, and we'll move down to our agenda items, starting with A, human resources, background screening and policy update. Ms. Sarah.
Yeah, I'm surprised she didn't come up.
Good afternoon.
Overprove them all out of A and B. I'm serious.
Yeah. There it is. Okay. Would you like to make any comments before we go ahead?
No, not really. I just wanted to... We took Commissioner Adams Act's recommendation to make bereavement five days. And then I just want to clarify real quick in that the fire, rescue, and EMS would have 48 hours of leave due to their shift work. But that would still equal like five days. Oh, we are. I'm sorry. I'm just kind of lumping it all together. Sorry about that.
I was hoping that both of them go together.
He was trying to.
Well, I was trying to, and I just wanted to say that I've read these, and it was self-explanatory. It wasn't like I just blew through it. I actually read and studied this, so.
Thank you.
My motion stands, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we've got a motion to accept item A and B as presented.
A and B, right.
And we've got a second by Commissioner Adams Act. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
From now on, give everything to Sarah. Remember it. You got it?
Okay, we'll move down to item C, a request for a vacated portion of Bass Drive.
Oh, no, this is like Family Feud right here. We both hit the button about the same time.
Y'all tied, as a matter of fact, so.
Number one.
Both of you.
Well, good. He gets to go first, then Ty goes to the...
You're the vice chair, though.
Yeah, but Ty goes to the young, good-looking guy.
Just before we get started...
I didn't hit my button.
And rightfully so, too, Mr. Adams Act. If I remember correctly, before we get started, weren't we going to go onsite and have a meeting down there and have this discussion? And then I think COVID came into play and we couldn't get out. Was that the problem? And I thought we were going to go down there, and maybe I'm wrong.
We were going to do that, and I would suggest after whatever we decide here today, I guess if we decide not to do it, move it forward, is to have a meeting down there to open it up to the citizens down there and then see if the commissioners want to come in and see exactly, you know, what is going to happen there. COVID did postpone that, but then Mr. Cartwright withdrew his request. So now he's resubmitting his request. So we did see this back in May of 2020.
Okay, so we didn't do it. We didn't finish it up back then.
Exactly.
And then Mr. Cartwright took it out, and then, so we never really resolved the issue back then one way or the other. That was my question, I guess.
Exactly, we have not.
Okay, so it's still the issue of the little strip of land between the lagoon and the piece of property that he's wanting to build on, is that correct? There was like a strip in there that was a road or something. Is that still what it's an issue?
Yeah, and Mike's done some research on it, and Mr. Cartwright has done some research on it, too, so he probably wants to speak also. But yeah, there's a strip that's in there that he's requesting of vacating the right-of-way, and he's already built the house. He's already put the house there. So the house is there now, so.
Well, I guess then it's just a matter of do we... He's requested to go back through the process, correct?
Exactly.
So it's just a matter of us going back through the process, right? I mean...
Yes, from what... Again, this is from what I understand. We're vacating the road, and there's a 10-foot strip between the road and the lagoon. And I believe he's already purchased part of that 10-foot strip. So either that road, he owns on both sides of that road, and it's just kind of the end of the road.
So the road doesn't actually touch the lagoon anyhow? There's a strip of land in between the road and the lagoon?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, if that's the case, then it would be like the end of a road to nowhere, because if I remember right, I'm doing this straight by memory, which is not good, but there's a circle there or a cul-de-sac or something. There was a circle, and then this road kind of went off to the right and dead-ended down there in the canal that goes out.
Correct. And from what I understand, there's two sides. The side that Mr. Cartwright's on, and then the other side. And the other side was vacated years ago, from what I understand. So this side, when they built the subdivision or had the subdivision done, there was that 10-foot wide strip going all the way around the lagoon that was dedicated to the residents of that subdivision, so they could tie their dock, you know, their boats off there and pop out.
Well, there being so much interest from the people that live at River Bend, East River Bend?
No, it's West River Park.
River Park, River Park. So with there being that much interest in it, you're going to have to go through the whole hearing process, just like you did last time, aren't you, Commissioner Pickens?
Well, that's what we're here to discuss. I'm not sure. I know there was some opposition last time. Now, none of those citizens reached out to me until the day we were presenting this, okay? So...
You mean the last time?
The last time.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't here the last time, but what I believe we did, and I don't know if we still have all the documents from the first time we went and did this, you know, or had them get all the documents as far as the fire department sign-off, sheriff's sign-off, electrical, gas, or whatever might be in there. They have to sign off on that as well?
I'm pretty sure all of them did sign off last time.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure. So I think it got right down to the part of vacating the road, and because of the opposition from some of the residents in there, and like I said, I'm doing this by memory, I believe that we were going to have a site visit down there and look at it, actually go see it in person, like a called site visit, where everybody could show up and meet with people. And I don't think that ever took place.
No, it never happened. We were pretty up in the height of COVID, so we didn't do that. And then the request was drawn.
Okay. So I'm assuming at this point that you would have to go back with the application, back to the sheriff and the FPL or Clay, whoever's in the area, the different entities that you would normally go to on a vacated street, just like they did on that one out in Inlockon the other day.
Right.
And they'd have to go through all those processes, and then if they bring them in, you bring that to us for the final decision to vacate it, isn't that correct?
Yeah, we would go through that same process. We can, you know...
What are you asking us for today?
Well, I don't know. This was kind of brought up at the last minute for us, but do we want to go through that process?
Yeah, Mr. Cartwright wants to make his request again, and I think he has some things that he wants to share that he's done on his research side.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir. All right, Bobby, you want to come on forward and...
Can I press that stuff for y'all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So to try to get you all up with where we were.
Sorry, I didn't recognize you. Mr. Cartwright.
Commissioner Goddard, which is not here anymore, brought up a valid point in what started my research was why wouldn't the county give me anything, okay? Well, at the time, that's a really good question. So...
Need to give one to Ashley for the record.
What I did was...
And Bobby, could you go to the podium when you're done and then state your name and address just for the record, please?
Okay, so I'm Robert Cartwright, and my address on record is P O Box 38 Lovejoy, Georgia, for everybody here that effectively knows why, but also own much property here in the county. So when I brought this to y'all before, the request was different, because I really thought that y'all owned the right-of-way and did up until a few days ago. So when I waited for COVID to get passed, and then I waited some time, and I didn't want to do anything because the people that were in opposition were snowbirds, were only here part of the time. So I wanted to wait till they got here after process of time. So everybody's here. Well, the main complainant sold their home recently and moved on. That was Jim and Mary. They moved on. So the complaint is a little less. So to get back to what I was looking for, I was trying to figure out how I could compensate the county in some manner for what. I didn't want y'all to just give me something. So I went to the property appraiser's office, and that's where that letter and that map comes from. And I met with Clay Davis, and I said, "I need you to assess this little piece of property and tell me what it's worth, so maybe I could do 10 times as much money to the park or something to appease the commissioners." And he said, "Well, they don't own the property. I own the property. I own property on both sides, which means I own it to the center line." And the right-of-way, as you see the little map, shows the, all the way around canal, I own all the way around the set-aside easement. It's what I'm asking you to do is set aside the easement, not so much now as give me a piece of property, because I actually own the property. So the complaint back then was, the petition, the people that were opposed to me, said, "Well, we can't use that property to fish anymore." Well, in fact, they fishing across my place anyway. So if I was crazy about it, they couldn't do that anyhow. But there is a mechanism there for River Park east and west that if you're a resident there, you pay $40 a year as a boat club member, and you can use that island in the middle of that place that you were talking about there, Commissioner, because you could do all the fishing that you wanted to. So there is a mechanism to fish. The only other thing was, of course, I've already built a new home there, and it's, my wife and I use it as for our own pleasure and then as a vacation rental. When you talk about the right-of-way, you made a very valid point, Commissioner Turner, that don't go anywhere. It does. It goes to Bobby's place. It goes to my house on the right, my property on the left, and at the end of the canal, it doesn't go anywhere. So the utilities, we did check with the Sheriff's Department and just everybody on demand, and we didn't have any opposition from the county. So I just want you to re-look at this, and if you look at the pictures that I supplied, that my wife and I took yesterday, a picture one and two, it shows that that's a grassed area with a palm tree, average of about 10 or 12 years, standing right in the middle of y'all's right-of-way. I don't think the county's ever done anything with this property. It's always been in front of that house. That guy, Mr. Fraser, was a de facto resident here. He's from Jacksonville, retired Marine pilot that I bought it from. He used it as a party house until the house flooded and he had to tear it down. I ended up buying the empty lot. So somebody, some private resident has always taken care of that piece of property. It's never been a burden on the county, so.
Chairman, if we don't own, we have an easement only. We don't own the underlying land use, but we just have the easement on only. Would it be the same process that it would be normally for us to vacate the easement as it would to vacate a road? Or do we know that?
I don't know. I mean, it's the same where you would surplus. You're declaring to the public that you don't need that easement anymore, and then you're surplusing it and then...
So it'd be basically the same procedure to go through it, so we're not really giving him anything. We're just saying the public can't go and use his property.
Well, that would be if it's an easement, but if it's branded to us, which is kind of what Clay's letter looks like.
If he owns both sides of it in the end, usually when you vacate a road, you'd give half to one landowner and half to the other.
One to the other. That's correct.
If he owns both sides, it's no different if the process is the same. I guess that's my question, is would the process be the same to abandon an easement as it would be to vacate a road?
I think for this, it would be, yeah.
Okay.
And I don't mind the process. If we get to the same place, I can't see where the utility people or Sheriff's Department or EMS would change their mind that they need that for anything different.
If you remember, I was kind of for it last time.
Absolutely.
I don't have really an issue with this at all, if y'all don't have an issue.
And I don't have so much as have an issue with having the site visit, because I think the problem with our neighbors is education and information. It's not nothing other than that. They think that I'm taking something from them, when in fact I'm not. So I don't mind. Either way the commission wants to do it, I'd just like to move it forward.
Commissioner Harvey?
All right, so, Mr. Cartwright, before you...
Is your light on?
Sorry. No. So basically, you're talking about this little piece of property here...
No, sir. I own that piece.
Above that, the square, that piece.
Square.
Yes, sir. The right is the end of this. It's that 50-foot by 110-foot portion.
It's not back here?
No, sir.
And it's not right there?
No, sir.
Okay. So why would we have, I guess the question is, why do we have an easement there anyway?
It was a mistake. They didn't do it on the other side. It was just drawn in, maybe in the 50s, and I feel like it was a development mistake.
But now, let me ask you this. On page two of the letter you provided from Clay Davis, it appears that we have not, the county has no dealings with that, right? We don't have anything to do with it anymore.
No, sir.
According to Clay Davis. So why are you here?
Because I can't use it for impervious surface. I can't use it for permitting processes, because that easement is still on record. It was just put on record, never was abated. So in fact...
So why did we put an easement on there? Was it utility? Was it...
It was a million years ago. We don't know. It was, we got stuff like this all over the county.
Yeah, I know. Mr. Trossel, do you know what the easement was?
It was for ingress and egress easement. It was a road. That was the road to that last parcel.
But now that he owns it, it's not...
Well, it's still showing up at all the plats as an easement. Now, Public Works has no problems vacating that easement, but that's what it was there for. And I believe the other side was the same way, but years ago, that got changed.
I say we vacate the easement and move on.
Well, and that's why I was, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of why I was making that comment a minute ago to Rich. Why, do we have to go through this whole process, or can we just vacate the easement and be done with it? Okay, all right. Yeah, that's what I want to do.
Okay, so can I ask a question? So the process is that we vacate the easement, and Mr. Cartwright's made whole, right? And everybody goes away. Everything's fine. None of the landowners are missing out on anything at that point? Got you. I got you. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think we still have to go through that same process, but it's...
I'm fine. I wave in support.
Okay, so they just have to go through that? Right. Do you have a problem if I call a meeting on the site?
Well, I don't know the point now. I hate to say it that way, but...
It's still a public easement. It is on the books as saying anybody can go down that road as we speak right now, because the easement is in place.
The 10-foot between the water, so they can't go there without...
They can't go there, but they go down the road. Again, it just...
They could literally just back up in front of the house and sit all they want, but it doesn't go where you want it to go.
Bobby, come up if you would, come up to the...
And I'm not being hard to get along with the neighbors. If somebody goes over there and kids are fishing off of the buckhead, I don't care. I have a little sign that says be kind, clean, and courteous. That's all I care. Now that I've built the home and I've got guests going in and out, I would, even people use my dock for credit. If I have residents there, somebody there, be kind. Don't go over there and do stuff. And the neighbors are doing real well. So the issue that we had truly, folks, they sold and moved on. They did well, sold the house. The money was right. So we don't have that kind of complaints as we once would have, because they were jumping up and down. I was building the house, and they really said I blocked the sunset for them.
Well, Bobby, I was hoping that we could just do it and be done with it, but according to our attorney, I can't do that.
And I don't mind the process. I've waited since '20. I don't mind moving forward, but I want to put this to sleep, because we got other stuff going on in the county.
I understand.
I just want to, and I appreciate y'all trying to just shut it down and move on.
Then we go, do we go through the normal process then at that point? We're...
Well, I think the process is pretty well. I don't know that, and of course, not doing y'all's job by no means. It would not take long for everybody to sign off in the Sheriff's Department, EMS, and all and say, "Hey, it is what it is." Probably as soon as y'all can get it back to a voting meeting, you would have your answer. And the onsite thing, one thing, Commissioner Pickens, is let's re-advertise it onsite and see if your phone goes to blowing up, and if it does, let's hold a public meeting. If it doesn't go to blowing up, let's move on. That may suffice to keep going down there. Just have them re-advertise it in front of the place, saying, "Hey, he's at it again."
Crazy old man's at it again.
We're doing the same thing. Everybody knows. I politic this. I mean, I politic it with the neighbors. My wife and I have rode the golf carts. We don't have the opposition we once had. Everybody thought I was going to do something crazy there. They didn't know I was going to build a really super-nice home. It just turned out okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay or super-nice? Sir?
Super-nice, super-nice.
It...
You said you built a super-nice. I thought you said it turned out okay.
You know, I'll tell you this, Commissioner. I live in a rental-type unit, my wife and I, and it's okay. I spent about $3.25 million on the river out there. It's pretty nice. I'd invite y'all to come see it.
Okay, so he just goes, he follows the process through, where does he start? With Public Works?
I've already started it. Now it's...
Exactly.
We will get back in touch with you, because we have our right-of-way agent. We'll get all that stuff together. And if we can reuse the same stuff that was submitted last time, we will. If not, we'll, I will ask you for some more information to get. And then what we'll do is we'll bring it in front of one of the last workshops, get a date for a public hearing, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, then you'll advertise it out at the site?
We can do whatever you guys want to do.
Well, you have to put the county signs out there. There's going to be a possible road vacation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Or easement vacation, right. So they would be aware.
Right.
We'll follow the same process, Mr. Chairman, as it's laid out in our code to follow, to make sure that we do it right.
And please, if they call about that question, just give them my cell phone number, okay? So I'll know.
Oh, I'll give them your cell phone number, sir.
All right. Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't, I'm not opposed to going out there, but I don't think we need to start some type of a new thing. If we've already started it and the opposition wants us to go out there, then that's fine. But right now, I think we should just follow the normal path that we normally do. And my question is, I know we have to advertise, but do we need to charge, Mr. Bobby here, Mayor, I'm sorry, do we need to charge him another fee, or can we just use the previous application and everything and just charge him for the advertisement at that point?
Well, typically, I don't know. Currently, we charge $300 right off the bat. So that's $300. That covers everything. It covers the advertisement and everything, so.
But you've already done everything but new advertising, right?
Correct.
So should we charge him another 300, or should we just charge him?
I don't think so. But that's just, that's just me. I don't believe we should, because he's already submitted it once.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And it's no fault, well, I say no fault, just COVID hit and some other stuff, and so I never got falling back on it. I don't believe that is a no additional charge you should pay.
You're going to waive the fee. You're going to have to make that motion, and my...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we waive the fee to reapply with the exception of the fact of the advertising cost.
Second.
There.
We've got a motion to waive the fee in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Commissioner Adams Act?
This might make Mr. Turner happy, but I normally am all for having extra meetings, but in this case, I do agree with Commissioner Harvey that unless the public demands it, I don't think it's necessary. We didn't all go down first street or Melrose.
Okay, and if there's some uproar, I'll go out there. I'll go out there myself.
I'll bring my kids out there. I won't go fishing off your dock, but that's besides it.
You can't do that. That could be, you know...
I'm teasing.
Okay.
That would be, that would only put up a different sign in front of his house that no people are allowed.
All right, we're good.
A long time coming, thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Don't forget, come by tomorrow and I'll have that here. Okay.
Hey, Bobby, mayorin' must pay better up there than it does here. Mayorin' must pay better up there than it does here. Build that big, old, beautiful home down there on the river.
That's it.
Got to get that money out of their county, other state.
Okay, all right, that's all the agenda items. We'll move down to Commissioner requests. And item A, Commissioner Rawls, Waterways and Trails Committee Structure Discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Sam Carr to come up and lead this discussion. I've been trying to get things moving along at a more expedient pace on the Waterways and Trails Committee, and we'd like to make a proposal on, it's not staffing, what would you call it?
Committee structure.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, well, so, yeah, we've...
Sam, go ahead and state your name.
I'm sorry. I'm Sam Carr, 108 Riverside Drive at Satsuma. And I've been on this committee since 2010, I think. But at the time I joined the committee, it was not the Waterways and Trails Committee.
Right.
It was a Waterways Committee. And that was led by Nancy Harris and Ed Taylor. And so that's the committee that I originally joined. As we formed the Putnam Blueways and Trails Citizens Support Organization, there was a, it wasn't an official committee, it was a working group that was formed by the commission at that time, and it was called a Trails Working Group. And that was led up by, ooh, I forget those guys. It was Chip and Brad. Yeah, those were the two commissioners that formed that group. So as the Putnam Blueways and Trails Group formed, which was part of the Trails Working Group, and Chip became the head of the Waterways Committee, and I think the county had an audit about the same time. So we figured out, we just have, we'd form that into one committee. That would be a Waterways and Trails Committee. And so that's the way that it's been operating for the past four years, five years, four years or so. And so at the turn, when we made that turn, several of these, the folks that were involved with the Waterways Committee were not exactly invited back. And so when we're, as we've been working on the Waterways Committee here recently, it comes evident that we need to have representation by certain other entities. And so we decided to go ahead and put it in writing. So what we have right now in the Waterways and Trails Committee is Mary Garcia for District One. I'm District Two Representative. Ken Mahaffey is District Three Representative. District Four has been open for a year. District Five is Zachary Landis. The Putnam Blueways and Trails Representative is Craig McLean. Craig's also the co-chairman with me on the committee. We have a Public Works Representative, Mike Rodriguez, and at-large representatives Linda Kreider and David Girard. And we... That's current, right. 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 What you're look, well, right. The proposed includes the, the people that are.
We have people that, that participate.
Right.
Actually, but they, they come anyways.
Right, yeah. So, uh, the, the lower part of that, uh, the City of Palaca, St. John's River Water Management, Chamber of Commerce, Crescent City Representatives, City of Pomona, Interlaken, and Walaika Representatives will be at-large members, um, and, uh, to provide these communities with representatives for the river, basically is, is the way, and, and the trails, part of it. So, uh, that's what I propose that, uh, or what I suggested to the committee that we, we go back to, because that was the original structure of the Waterways Committee. It had the city commission, it had the city at-large representatives. So, um, I proposed this to the, to the committee at our last committee meeting, and they decided to ask Jeff to forward it on, and that's where we are.
Okay. Commissioner Harvey, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm probably going to be not for that. I'll say that. I've said it before. I think we need to have a Trails Committee, standalone committee for Trails. I think that's very important for our county. I'm not opposed to this. I'll, I'll say that to some extent. As long as there's clear defined boundaries to deal with. Not some group that represents Putnam County competing with Putnam County. And I've said that before, and I'll say it again. We don't need this group to completely fly in the face of what this county is trying to do. So, I think that we need to have a Trails Committee, and if we want to have a Waterways, that's fine. But I don't think that's the important thing now. I think the important thing that we have is the Trails going on as long as we have clear defined boundaries and outlines of what the scope of work is going to do. And that's how I feel about that.
Appreciate that, but I totally disagree. This is a, this is a citizens group.
But it's a lot of.
So, the citizen ought to set the agenda, not Chairman Harvey. And, and, and so, as far as within guidelines.
Sam, but every other group advises the Board of County Commissioners. They don't run out there on their own and do their own thing. And that's what happens in some cases. So, this.
I don't know what you're talking about.
You know it's true, Sam. I'm not, I'm not, everybody here knows it's true. I'm not.
I don't believe it's going to do any good to debate him over this.
I know, but I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with the committee as long as they advise the Board of County Commissioners with clear defined goals, not run out there and do what they want to do.
Okay.
Before I turn it over to Commissioner Turner, I didn't have Town of Walaika. You added Town of Walaika on here.
Right. I, I, I left that off, but we need to add it, yeah.
Yeah, I would think so, if you're going to have this, this structure.
And, and Walaika was on the original Waterways Committee.
Do you have to be, do you have to live in your district to represent it?
No.
All right, Commissioner Turner?
I guess I have a few questions. Um, right now, we, do, at the current time, do we have a Waterways and a Trails Committee?
No.
So, we have a Waterways and Trails, and it's on the first page, current format in our packet.
Correct.
And so, there's basically Commissioner Rawls, Ken, Craig, Mary, um, Kevin, Sam, and Zachary. Okay, so, if that's the case, this is a Sunshine Committee, isn't it? So, Kevin can't serve on this anymore. Because if he does, if Jeff, if Commissioner Rawls talks to him about any issue that comes before this committee, and they're not in a, a publicized meeting, they just violated the Sunshine.
These are publicized. They're recorded and everything.
Yeah, but outside.
You talk to him about anything to do with this Waterways Trails Committee that's not in a meeting, you violated the Sunshine. That's why we just changed it.
Changed it for the Parks and Recs.
Because Terry was, or Terry was on it, and Kevin was on Parks and Rec, and we had to take both of them off because they couldn't legally talk to Commissioner Pickens about what was going on on Parks and Rec. So, number one thing I see is Kevin's got to come off this committee, or, or the, it's not just Jeff. It's whatever commissioner is running that cannot talk to Kevin. Well, you can't get anything done if you can't talk to your recreation director.
Well, we used to, we used to have, um, getting old.
So, so, can, can I ask you a question?
The Sunshine al, also applies to the, to the members of the committee too. So, so, um, Mary Garcia could not talk to Kevin about that. That's what happened with the Parks and Rec.
Or talk to Sam, or talk.
Exactly, is that we, it's really, it came up when the pickleball, because we really needed to have discussions with, with Administrator Suggs, his staff, and, and then Kevin, and we couldn't do that other than advertised meeting. So, it really hindered our ability to do pers, to do your own research.
Right. So, uh, understanding, I don't understand bureaucracy, but that's not my nature. But, um, so if, if the, and going back to Kevin, okay, and him in particular.
That's the first part of my deal. If you as a committee member went and talked to Kevin and said, I need to talk to you about Waterways and Trails business.
Right.
If he talks to you and y'all have a conversation, and you're not in a recorded called meeting, advertised called meeting, y'all have just violated the Sunshine Law, and you can go to jail.
Okay.
Or you talk to Ken Mahaffey.
This is not my interpretation. You can't talk to another committee member, Kevin, or anybody else. This is, this is.
We had Tess, Tess Simpson was the, was the representative, but before she left the county.
Who?
Tess Simpson.
Okay.
She was the representative.
Well, then you couldn't talk to Tess, and Tess couldn't go, if Kevin was on there, she couldn't go talk to Kevin. But if Kevin wasn't on there, you could go talk to Kevin because he's not on the committee, but you couldn't go talk to Tess. Two committee members can't talk, and nobody can go to Kevin and say, um, Sam Carr said, I can't, I couldn't. If Sam came to me, and I'm not on the committee, so we wouldn't be violating Sunshine.
They, they weren't there as, they, they were there as.
Excuse me, I'm talking.
In advisory capacity.
He's just making a comment. Go ahead.
They're, they're there as, as, so Tess didn't have any voting powers, and Kevin doesn't have any voting powers. They're just advice, that's all. And, and answer questions.
He's a committee, this says he's a committee member.
We would like, we would like to make sure that they are there.
Yeah, we, we need help structuring the committee. So. How, how should it be?
When Mike Rodriguez started showing up, um, it was, it was like a, a breath of fresh air because when somebody asks a question about a trail or something going on, we had the answer, and he, he was able to get it. Because a long, for a long time, people wouldn't show up from Parks and Rec, from Public Works.
Jeff, you don't understand, I don't care. This was what we got from our lawyer on the Parks and Rec. The only reason I know it is they couldn't, they had to come off Parks and Rec.
But what we're asking for is that, is that when we have the committee, that the, that the county make the commitment to have Mike there as.
I think that Julianne can do that for sure. Are you over this committee, or you just Parks and Rec? I mean, you're over Parks and Rec.
It falls under Parks and Rec, and we can have staff attend, um, but it is my recommendation to not put either staff member as an actual committee member.
Right. We're just, we're just asking that they, yeah, we're just asking that we have somebody to answer questions. So, we're there for an hour and a half, sometimes two hours, and, um, if, if we have the, the, the resources available, the meetings move along a lot better, and we don't have to postpone something. That's all we're asking for. Um, Linda, Linda Kreider, uh, she's there every, every, at every meeting. Um, same thing with David Girard. David Girard has done so much work, um, for the committee, um, so we're just asking that, that they be included in this. Um, I, I've, I've spoken to the City of Palaca. I don't know why they don't participate.
Okay, wait. Commissioner Turner does have the floor, so he can finish, and then you're next.
But.
Okay, so, that was my first comment. I don't think he can serve as a committee member.
Right, right.
He can still attend your meetings, which is fine, because everybody can then talk to Kevin, all the members, all the whoever can talk to Kevin, and he can try to expedite. He just can't say, Commissioner Rawls, tell Sam Commissioner Rawls said this, because then Kevin's violating the Sunshine. But I think Kevin understands that. So, number one, I think Kevin can't be a committee member. Number two, the current format includes one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people, including Kevin. Correct? The, the first page here, it says current format.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so, what you're wanting to do then is expand that to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. You want to, and 19 with Walaika.
Okay, so, um, my copy that I was looking at before, before we got here and everything shows that the actual committee members should be, again, if you take Jeff off, then it would be, uh, District One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Putnam Blueways and Trails, and the two at-large. That would actually be the committee. The rest of these folks would, I don't know if you're going to call them at-large members, or what, what do you call representatives? I mean, non-voting representatives.
They could be either a district representative or an at-large com, uh, member. That's why I'm trying to find out what you're asking for, Sam, I really am. So, what you're wanting to do is you're wanting to expand from the first format to the current proposed format of 19 people on your committee? Is that? Okay, well, who you're asking to be on the committee? Because it's, what I have here in the proposed format says, it's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. And I believe on top of those 17, you said you wanted to add Pomona Park. So, that'd be 18.
No, Walaika.
Walaika, excuse me.
Well, uh, Commissioner, I, what you're saying makes sense to me. And I don't know what to call these other folks, that we would like to have representation on the committee. Not that they would be voting members or anything like that, but, but we would like to have input from them as we made decisions. Does that?
They can come all they want, but they're either a member or they're not, Sam. I mean, I don't understand what your request is.
I think you.
Who?
Sorry.
Who on there do you actually want on your committee that you don't have now? Because the first page you had there was, was a, was a, um, was the existing committee with Commissioner Rawls, Districts One, Two, Three, Four, would be Four, but there's not one at the moment. And then you have Waterways and Trails Representative, which is Craig. And then you have Parks and Rec Director, which he can't be on there anymore. We got to take him off. So, um, so I guess, who are you wanting to actually add to the committee and be committee members? I don't understand that.
Okay.
I was saying, committee members as voting members, right? Voting members.
Yeah, but they can come and talk at the committee all they want. If they're not voting members, you don't have to make them a member of the committee. That's like, come all you want and talk whatever you want to talk.
That's right, that's fine. I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it.
That's why I'm asking though. I'm not trying to be a, who, what are you trying to ask for as far as additional members on the committee from what you have? So, two at-large members that you don't have right now.
Correct.
You know, I, I'm, ooh. How do we, how do we just spout out a name and then assign a title to it? Guys, that's dangerous. We want Linda and David, and now we got to find a spot.
So, what you do.
What if we said Terry and Sue, or what if we said?
My, I understand what you're saying.
He's still got the role.
But I guess my point being is, if they're just wanting to add two at-large members.
Because they can't get appointed right now.
That's correct. They would not be appointed. We would add two at-large members, and then it would be up to a commissioner to nominate as an at-large. They can't appoint them. They would nominate those two positions, and then they would be voted on by the board. So, if Commissioner Rawls, for instance, as chairman of this committee, decided to, or as a member of this committee and commissioner decided he wanted to nominate these two people, whoever they are, or pick, pick two more, then they would be voted on by this board, just like any other member at an at-large position would be. We wouldn't be able to, I think that we're talking about too many issues at one time here, and we got to take them in order. And so, order number one here is Kevin can't be on it.
Right, right.
As far as I'm concerned, he's got to come off. Number two would be, I have no issue giving them a couple of at-large people. We just did it on Parks and Rec, and there was no issue to it whatsoever. Matter of fact, uh, I nominated somebody to one of them positions. I think the other one may still be open. I'm not sure. So, there was two.
I nominated, so we're full.
Okay, that's right. Excuse me, I remember that now. So, it's full too, but it was nominated, and those people were put in there. I have no issue at all, this commissioner has no issue at all, in adding two at-large positions to the existing committee and saying Kevin is no longer a deal, which that would give them actually three at-large positions on the committee. Is that what you're looking for? Is three more at-large positions on your committee? And then it could be up to Commissioner Rawls at that time. If he's wanted to name, if he wanted to name J.R. Grimes to the committee, then he could, he could nominate him. He could nominate these people you just said. I think Linda and somebody, whatever. So, you could nominate them, and the board would vote on it. But that's the procedure that we would have to go through to make this happen. So, I, I have no issue if you want to add, ta, uh, take Kevin off and add one more at-large. That gives you two at-large other than what you have right now, and Kevin's no longer on your committee. Where everybody can talk to him. How do we, how do we do that? By motion?
If, if I can have the floor for a second.
Okay.
I'll clear this up.
I don't know if you're next. That's up to Mr. Pickens.
Can, Harvey would be next.
No, he, he gets four, go ahead.
Okay.
I am?
You're next, yes.
I don't have a problem, uh, okay, let's, number one, let's go to current format. That's where I'm at today. I think that, uh, I think if we're going to do this, we keep the county commissioner, we keep District Three, we keep District One, we keep District Two, we keep District Five, we keep District Four, and put two at-large.
Right.
But that gets Craig off of there as that Blueways and Trails CSO.
And he need, that needs to be on.
But he could be in at-large, Sam, so I'm not having a debate with you. I'm just saying, if we're going to clean it up, let's clean it up. Where we have the commissioner, whoever that commissioner is, then we have five district appointees and two at-large.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that how we feel?
If Kevin comes off, you do one other deal.
And the other CSO comes off, and he can get reappointed as an at-large position if he chooses to do so.
And you can still do different four, yeah.
And now, let me say this while I still have the floor. If we're going to go to the proposed one, I think, I think you can invite those people to come and speak. But I sure don't want to tell the Town of Interlaken that you have to have a representative on that. They might not want to participate in that. They, Walaika might go, I'm not really interested. You know, I, I don't, I can't speak for them. But they can surely be invited to come and be a part, kind of like our logic meetings, that everybody was invited to come and speak at that point.
Well, and I guess my vis, my vision of that was as we're doing things that involve, well, Walaika, for example. Our committee is currently reviewing what's going on with the Bass Pro, uh, that stuff down there. And, and we would like to have a Walaika representative in the committee.
But why is your committee reviewing Bass Pro?
Because it's, it involves the river.
And see, but that's.
But that's not under the.
That's not under your purview.
Oh, it's not under the purview of your committee.
No, and that's what I'm saying. You're over.
Okay, wait, that, that's enough. We're here to discuss.
I yield the floor, Mr. Chairman.
We're here to discuss the structure of this board. Paul, you're next.
I was going to try to simplify, but I think you guys all got there for the most part. So, District One through Five, Commissioner, Two at Large. That's what the new thing looks like. I'm fine with that. The, the point that I think they're trying to make is you can't say it's going to be Linda, it's going to be so-and-so, because it's up to one of us to nominate someone.
Right.
So, that, that's easy enough. So, if that's what you want, I, I think we're all saying we're willing to do that, right? So.
And then you can invite the other people that you have mentioned here, and I would think that the Town of Walaika, Pomona Park, Crescent City would be open whether they'll send somebody or not.
So, that was the other part of what I was going to say is, if you make them committee members, let's say you said, let's say we said, let's make Pomona Park, Interlaken, all that, and then they didn't show up, then you don't have quorum member, and you're not going to be able to have a meeting anyhow. So, definitely, you could have invited them to any meeting you had before today, and you can invite them to any meeting you have for perpetual. So, that, that's on the committee to do that.
Okay.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, it is. I was going to bring that up. That's going to be a tough quorum to get with 19.
Bingo.
All right, Commissioner Rawls. My turn. All right, so, I'd like to add a ninth position so we can keep this at an odd number, so we won't be deadlocked, and include a representative from the CSO. I think it's important that we have somebody from Blueways and Trails, um, on there. They, they do a tremendous amount of work, whether it's Craig or whoever they select. I think they should.
It's all you're asking is in addition to what we just said, you keep the Waterways and Trails on there.
Keep the CSO, um, position on there.
I'm good with that. I can handle that.
And then the, uh, but what we would also like is a commitment from the county to, to have someone from Parks and Rec.
I don't think you're going to have an issue with that. I truly, truly don't. I just don't.
Okay. I mean, that's, and then, um, the other ones, you know, like you said, it's, uh, City of Palaca's never, that, since I've been there, has never shown up. And I've asked many times why they don't have representation. Uh, I feel like they should, especially we're, we're having conversations about that.
I think we just gave you what you wanted. You still at it? I think we just gave you what you wanted, you still at it?
Alright, we good, Sam?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, alright, hang on just a second. Are you still, you're gone?
You talking to me?
Nope, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just thought I was done.
Commissioner Harvey.
So, I guess the question I have, I think it's time that we really look at what we're going to be asking this group to do. For an hour and a half to two hours of sitting there mumbling over stuff, what is really your position? What is the county's commissioner's position on what this group should be doing? And outside the sunshine, as you heard today, y'all can't talk. And we know that takes place.
Was you twanging to that?
I'm just gonna say-
Y'all can't talk.
Y'all can't talk. Now, let me say this, I've heard Parks and Rec needs to be there, but why? Because not every trail goes under Parks and Rec. Some of it comes, is under the county-
The Parks and Rec Department is in charge of all the boat ramps.
Right, and also some maintenance.
I get that, but we have other, if we're really, Sam, here's where I'm, I can't get away from. We got more trails going on, and this is what we hear a lot more about, trails, 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 and trails, than we do waterways. So let's, I think personally, my feeling is, if we're gonna be a trail town, we're gonna have Craig come up here and really want us to do something with trails. We got it in public works, we need to have a Trails Committee. We really need to focus in on what we're going to be going into the future. But having two things split, I don't think that we're really focusing on what we should be about. Now, if you want to talk Waterways, I'll talk Waterways with you. If you want to talk Trails, I'll talk Trails with you. But I don't see that this group ever comes to us to make a recommendation other than Craig comes from the CSO, from Blue Ways and Trails, and talks about Trails. You talk about Waterway. I think it's really time to-
That's not, that's not true.
That's not true.
That's the purpose.
That's not-
Time to really have that conversation of what we're gonna look like going forward.
Yeah, that's, that's not correct.
May I, may I respond?
I don't know, that's up to the-
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Harvey, you know, five years ago, I would have agreed with you. I didn't want to form a Waterways and Trails Committee. Because the Trails Committee is very specific about what it does. The Waterways Committee is spread out and does a lot of different things. And, and all, and so, when, but, and, and in fact, when, again, Craig coming in, and, and the Trails dominated a large part of the Waterways and Trails Committee for several years, until we really needed to get busy in doing some stuff. But the Waterways Committee has done an awful lot for this county, and continues to try to do an awful lot for this county. And, and, and I think it's, it is a viable part of this county. The, the bicycle trails part of it, and the, and all, is, is, is very specialized. And I totally agree with you, but five years ago, I agree with you. And I didn't, I didn't agree with Chip when he wanted to form the two committees. That's just my personal opinion. And, and so, but they did. And so, that's, that's what, we're living with what we got. That's, to answer your question.
Okay, Mr. Turner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't care if you join the committees, I'm sorry, I just don't. But I do think that we need to give the commissioner, that takes his time and operates this committee, the tools that he feels is necessary to make his committee work. So with the exception of Kevin's got to come off, they can invite whoever it is, and I feel certain, I just really do, that if you say, if you call up Ms. Young and say, "I need Kevin there, because we're gonna be discussing this issue that he is over, I need him there." If you're gonna be discussing an issue that Mike Troxel needs to be there, then you call up Ms. Young, or Mike, or whoever, and you say, because this is under recreation, and she's ultimately head of recreation, is why I'm pointing it to Ms. Young. And so, I don't think you're gonna have an issue talking to her and saying, "I would like Mr. Troxel to be there, because we're gonna discuss maintenance on the trails, that he's gonna be there." It may be somebody else they need to get you there to talk to you and support you on your committee. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to try to regress to what we're actually trying to accomplish today, which is redoing his committee a little bit. So we're gonna keep the committee, with the exception, Kevin's coming off, and we're gonna have two at-large, two at-large. So that means McLean stays on it as a representative. So basically, we're taking Kevin off, we're adding two at-larges. That gives you nine possible members if you get them all filled up with two at-large. Is that what we're asking for?
Correct.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Alright, got a proper motion, a proper second. Paul, you're next.
I wish I had a picture of that.
I, I do want to say this, and, and when you listen to the conversations at the state level about Trails, it doesn't include Waterways. So Waterways are incumbent to Trails, because there's Waterways, there's, there's waypoints, there's other things that have to, with Trails, that kayaking, they consider that a trail if you're kayaking along the river, or along one of our lakes, things like that. So I think they are tied together. I did have the opportunity, when I was running for school board, to sit down with Mr. Lible, because we both have some Czechoslovakian in us, so we have that link. But we did talk about, he didn't talk about his thoughts on Waterways and Trails, and I agreed with everything he told me about combining Waterways and Trails, and that's part of the basis of it, is Waterways are part of your Trail System. And the fact that we have so many Waterways here is part of the reason why we can bring in the Trails and make Plaque a center point. So I mean, it's, Plaque of Sea Loop, there's a reason they name it around Sea Loop and around rivers. So, I just want to make that point. I'm all for this, this is cool, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls.
May I speak after the vote?
Yes. Commissioner Rawls?
I just want to say that we, we fairly early on split the committee into two committees. We do have a Waterways component and paddling trails, and then we have a bicycling component. So we, as much as we can, we, we alternate the, the agenda to where the paddling, the Waterway, the paddling and Waterways Trails gets to the top of the agenda. One month, and the next month, it goes to bicycle trails, and we go back and forth.
Sorry about me, we wouldn't have to do what we're doing today.
Nothing, just one with the other.
Okay. Learning how to build a watch again, I get you.
Alright, Administrator, before we, before we vote. Administrator Sugg, you have a comment?
I, I want to make sure we went to three o'clock today.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, based on some of the comments that I heard here today. So I, I just want to get a little clarification, if at all possible. I just, sitting here, you never know how you're gonna get educated. And we just got educated that, I understand Waterways and Trails is responsible for boat ramps, is that's what I-
Well, for the Waterways-
You also have a fishing front.
Mr. Chairman, please, Terry, don't get us off on the side yet, because this, this discussion is coming in just a minute.
Okay, okay, I just, I just need to know what to tell the other folks.
I think they're, I think they think they're responsible for many, many things that they're not responsible for, but that's okay.
Not, not boat ramps, self-launches, always-
I'll drop my comments, Mr. Chairman.
I implore you to let us get through this vote, and then we can have our argument on what they, we think they ought to be doing or not.
Okay, we got a proper motion and proper second, all in favor, in case saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got to see that.
You nailed us, I think, the first time today.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I've asked if I could, am I the next speaker?
You are the next speaker.
I do think, I think it's very important that Mr. Sugg's question is answered, my question is answered. I think it's time that we sit down and, and define, this board defines what that looks like. Because we have a planning department that's handling Wellacca. And we don't need, now if you're, if you're involved, now, Sam, I'm not debating, I'm not. If you're involved with another group that wants to be opposed or for, I don't have, that's your business. I, I'm not gonna get into it. But I am gonna get into the fact that we have a process to go through. And my concern is that we might have a committee out there that claims that it represents us, and it doesn't. So I think it's time, Mr. Suggs, I think it's time for maybe you and Julianne to join Mr. Rawls, Commissioner Rawls, in these meetings, and try to define the roles and responsibility of this group.
Great.
Period. And that's, that's where I'm going.
I think that's great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And back when we-
Sorry, what? What, did I mess up?
Yeah, we're gonna need a little more input from Commission on, on what-
Well, maybe you need to bring, sit in there and then say, this is where they're trying to go. Bring it to us, let us massage it, and say that's not the direction we're going in. Or, or maybe it is, I'm not sure.
In my opinion, that's, that's a subject for an additional workshop. That's not what they wanted today, that's not what they asked for today.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mr. Chairman, Mr., Commissioner Turner, I think that can be a workshop discussion where we all sit in a room and try to come up with some type of-
Yeah, and I think we- Let me, let me say this real quick.
And then I'll go to Jeff, and I have a comment, and then we're gonna go to Paul. But I think, and Sarah's worked on some of this, is that we started this a few years ago, where we went and did an orientation for the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, which most of the members had really no idea of exactly what they were supposed to be doing. And then they just meet once a quarter, so if you miss a meeting, then you've missed all those months. And they really saw, what was, what was my value to the county? What's my worth? So once they did the orientation, I think the, the attendance is much better, they get quorum, so I think they're back on track. Having the same issue, some of that with the AHAC Committee. I mean, we've got a good committee, but to get them all there, but we're, we are meeting once a quarter. That was a meeting hit and miss. So, but I, I think that might be time for us to define what the committee, or redefine what the committee's supposed to be doing, and all the members understand it.
Totally agree with that.
Alright, we go to Commissioner Rawls, and then we'll go to Paul.
I'm trying to put the worms back in the bucket here. Alright, so we're not looking to take over boat ramps. What's been discussed in the past is the fact that on the paddling trails, access to the river and other lakes through soft launches. David Girardin was nice enough to go around, and he found every boat ramp that we have listed. And he gave a report, and he said some of them, I remember one in Inalarkin, you couldn't, he couldn't even see the boat ramp, it was so overgrown. But then the committee immediately went to, well, could we go in there and make a soft launch area so somebody can take a kayak or canoe, blah, blah, blah. There's been discussion about getting, possibly getting one added underneath the-
Duns Creek Bridge.
Duns Creek, Duns Creek Bridge.
Duns Creek Bridge, right.
And which-
That's under the purview of the fishing committee.
No, these are, these are soft launch, these are soft launches for the paddling trails.
I understand that.
So at some point, there was, there was talk about marketing, and you know, how we start better marketing our paddling trails, and getting more people to come to Putnam County to use the paddling trails. And that's a function of Parks and Recreation at some point. What's the report that I-
SCORP.
SCORP, thank you. You know, looking at that in conjunction, SCORP includes paddling and bicycle trails. So, you know, we're involved in all this, of all this, all-
Kevin Billman- Outdoor Recreation, something, and it's, it's an inventory. And they do it county by county, and as it lucks, luck, luck would have it, they're gonna start with Putnam County.
Ours is up down.
And so, we're, we're, and Kevin, and the Parks and Rec Committee really is the group that needs to be managing that. And so, you know, that's, it's, it all ties together. And as far as the boat ramps go, it's, the reason the Waterways Committee is involved with boat ramps is because it's river access, that's the whole idea behind that.
So it's, we're not trying to take over the world. You know, the, the, the whole benefit of having the committee, and we have, multiple times, come in workshop form to this, this board. And when Craig came and presented last time, he wasn't coming here as CSO. He's coming here as a member of the Waterways and Trails. When, when Sam got up here with Craig that one time, when we were in the old room, they came. That is your Waterways and Trails Committee attempting to present and make a request to the commission or bring you up to speed. At the time, what we're requesting was getting additional commitments to trail maintenance to be able to move the trails along. But that's, that's pretty, pretty much the, the way I see it, is bicycling trails, paddling trails, access to lakes and river for that, marketing and mapping and stuff like that. That all, you know, falls in our topic of discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Adams, Zach?
I, I think I'll withhold until we have, I think, if we're gonna do a workshop on this subject, I'll withhold any further comment until we have that workshop specific to this. Because I think it is important to outline that. But I, I've been in a couple of the meetings, I think I've only been to two in the time I've been here, just to sit in, and, and the conversation around boat ramps were exactly that. They were about being able to get a canoe or a kayak in a location. It wasn't like they were saying, hey, we're gonna stop, you know, they didn't want to build boat launches or any of that stuff.
Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, I, I just, in the meantime, till we get around to defining this, I think that the committee needs to understand, unless I'm mistaken, that they're an advisory committee to this board. So that doesn't mean the committee needs to go to Tallahassee and lobby on, for the county.
Right.
And they don't get, they don't get, they don't get to tell Kevin what to do. They can ask, ask Kevin, and then Kevin can go ask Julianne, and then if it needs to come back to us, or whatever, then that's, just as long as everybody kind of stays in the proper line of authority here, I don't care what y'all talk about. I don't, I don't, yeah, staying in your lane, whatever, just do whatever you, tomato, tomato. So whatever, my whole point here is, as long as everybody understands that, we changed the committee today and got what you want, so I think we're good to go here.
I'm happy. The only question I had was back, back again, when the audit happened, I thought that we had a definition of each committee, did we not? Okay, because I, I thought that, but that needs to be done. It definitely needs to be done.
I started working on that a long time ago, it's kind of the blank committee for dummies, so if you remove the committee, you will-
Well, and, and Parks and Rec Committee has a, has a manual.
We just put together a manual.
And it is outstanding, and I would love to take out, you know, as a committee member of, of Waterways and Trails, I'd love to take Parks and Rec out and plug Waterways and Trails in. That's what I'd love to do. That's an excellent, excellent job.
We think Kevin and Julianne had a little input, mostly Julianne and Kevin on that one, so-
Thank you.
And we had, we took out a lot of stuff too, that just had kind of jumbled everything up, made it too complicated. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. It was mentioned that there might be a boat ramp out in the West Putnam End that wasn't available or wasn't seen. You have to kind of understand, in the West End, there were some lake access lots out there that Mr. Dersher worked real hard, along with the Landowners Association. There was fourteen or fifteen, and now there's, they sold some, and there's only a few. Let's not get those confused with the, because they're not for that purpose. They're for, they were designed for the residents out there to be able to walk to that area and use it. And they are under the purview of Parks and Rec, but the boat ramps are visible and can be seen and can be found. Some of those lake accesses are not to be found, and not to be seen, and not to be open, because they don't need to be. So there was some, I, I, I don't, I think we need to be careful when we throw that out there, because, you know, that, that's what we deal with, okay?
Well, I, I brought that up, not Sam, and the reason I did was because it, this is just something where David got a list from Parks and Rec of-
No, 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 it wasn't, it was FWC's list that David was working on. And so that boat ramp was on FWC's list. So it was publicized to the whole state of Florida, there was a boat ramp there, and that's what he did.
But just because FWC had, I know the one you're talking about. And it's not, it's not a public boat ramp. It's a public access that the county took over, but we don't allow boats to go do that. Now, soft launches and things, yes. But when you, it's not approved, because you had trucks getting stuck in the lake and had a big mess out there. So, yeah, that's, we gotta be careful of that.
Okay. Are we good on that item so far? And we'll put it down for a workshop in the near future, okay?
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
That's your third.
Okay, we'll move down to Commissioner Comments. I'll start with Commissioner Adams, Zach?
I really don't have any, thanks.
Mr. Turner?
Didn't you want to set a timeframe for that city meeting?
Yeah, I was gonna do that, mine-
How about three seventeen? How about three seventeen?
Mister, Mr. Chairman, I, I, just for a point of clarification, Ms. Young and I were talking during break. Uh, the month of March is gonna be real difficult because we're gone three of those potential dates, and then you got the fair as well that month. So, uh, I mean, you're welcome to have it without us, but we didn't, we wanna make sure you're aware of that.
We're gonna be gone on the seventeenth?
Fourteen, seventeen, and twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Wow.
Thirty-first?
Well, that one I would be.
No, you can't be here.
Yeah, I mean, the meeting lasts till three thirty. I just don't think I can make it back all the way up here from Orlando.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they're just gonna have to try to send them some backs of dates in April.
April, that's right. My February's booked up already, so I think April, getting to April on a Monday.
Twenty-eighth is not good?
No, not good for.
Okay. Or you said the fourteenth, okay. Um, well, we've been waiting a year for this to happen. I don't know what another month's gonna matter, so what's everybody's schedule in April? Do they know?
I got liver and onion night one night. I knew that.
It has to be a Monday or Thursday, is that correct?
I'd rather.
Sarah, what they're saying, Mondays and Thursdays now, and it's also Mondays and Thursdays, they meet on Thursdays, Craig.
Second and fourth, the second and fourth Thursday, I think they meet.
What about Monday, the eleventh?
Yeah, why don't you shoot it and see on April? And I got, this is per for preference for me. I, I really don't wanna meet on a Monday before a county commission meeting the next day.
What about?
Cause I have a schedule that I try to keep.
Let's do April.
And I can, I'll alter it if that's, if that's what we have to do, but I'd rather do it, um, you know, Monday, the fourth.
Or, or Monday, the eighteenth?
Or Monday, the eighteenth.
I'm good. Fourth and the eighteenth work for me, so we can send them back maybe.
Let's just ask them, can they do the fourth, and I'm gonna go ahead and jot it in, and then y'all tell me if it's not gonna work on the fourth.
We're gonna try.
Is that good for you to stand?
What, what time are we doing this?
Five to six P M.
Five, five o'clock in the evening on Monday, the.
Okay. Yeah, we've got a, I forgot, we got a Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting that day.
Why don't we go to the eighteenth?
Let's go to the eighteenth.
Isn't the eighteenth a Monday after Easter?
Yes.
Eighteenth is Easter Monday.
Yep.
Which, I don't know if that.
It's fine.
How about the seventh? It's on a Thursday night.
Yeah, the eighteenth.
Yeah, and then I'll throw the seventh.
Do you wanna do five or six?
I'd rather do five.
I'd rather do five. Five in the morning, tell them I'm ready.
Why don't we give them two dates, the seventh and the eighteenth? I mean, they gave us six.
The seventh and eighth.
We can't do the seventh.
The seventh and the eighteenth.
He's out on the seventh?
No, no, no. No, the Monday, the fourth, that four is a Parks and Rec Advisory Meeting. We meet every other month. So, the eighteenth would be fine, and this, you said the seventh, which would be a Thursday.
Yeah.
I can do the seventh and the eighteenth.
We could actually shoot him back the seventh and the eighteenth and see if they gave us seven choices.
Or, not and. And or? Or and?
And or is box.
Okay. Commissioner Turner, any other comments?
I just opened that one up. Took an hour to fix. You really want me to say anything else? I figured you'd like blackball me from being able to make any more.
He didn't hit you with a gavel, did he?
That's right. Or just, it's hard enough just to hit it real hard on there. It hurts me in the ear.
Ah, you go.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harvey?
No, sir, I have nothing. Administrator Harvey, is that what you call?
Uh, Commissioner Harvey.
Oh. I heard the minister.
Um, my closing comments, um, we have the second ARPA meeting tomorrow here at nine A M. Um, we, I'll have Julianne, she doesn't know this yet, but in our meeting after this meeting, she'll have, uh, what we have proposed the money for, and then the imbalance of what we have left. So, commissioners have come planned to discuss dispersing the rest of the money if possible with your requests. So, I'll allow each commissioner to, um, you know, make comments on that, and then hopefully, hopefully we can come together and prioritize and, and go ahead and move this money forward, or, or we'll schedule another meeting, so, um, that's all I have. Administrator Suggs?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. County Attorney? Okay. Who further business has come for this? Oh, public comment. We need to move, we need to make that bigger camera. Okay.
It's twelve tight now. I'm bold.
Okay, we'll go down to, um, item nine, public comment on miscellaneous items. Um, this portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens to, an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect that the board will gauge and debate a deliberation on which a board has not received any prior information. So, do we have any citizens that wish to make public comment at this time? Okay, if you do, please come forward and state your name and, and address, uh, for the record, and we'll give you roughly three minutes.
Hi, thanks for having me. Uh, my name is George Corbin, and my physical address?
Yes.
Uh, three one five North Second Street, Satsuma, Florida, three two one eight nine. Uh, I'm here today because I recently purchased a piece of property in September. Uh, after research with the Planning Department and Public Works, uh, they told me that the land was vested. The easement, what I've learned now is called the right-of-way, uh, was good to go, and Public Works verified that on a phone call. I did not get their name at the time, uh, but after due diligence and research, I purchased the property. Uh, I recently came out here in the past two months and learned that everything's been halted, and I can't get a building permit. And I know you guys are dealing with this countywide, um, uh, because after the easement was purchased back in the seventies, the last two hundred feet that needs to be cleared to go to my land, which I was told in September, uh, was able to be cleared. Now, it's not, everything's at a halt, um, and I'm running out of money waiting. And I know nothing can go forward without you guys letting the Public Works give me a permit to clear my little hundred feet to my property on an existing public right-of-way. Uh, I was wondering if there's any way to circumnavigate this so I can move forward with, um, my big dream home, fancy house, and, uh, while you guys deal with the larger, uh, subject that the county's going through with this land boom.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Rawls?
I, I also, sorry, tried to get, uh, uh, on the docket or agenda, um, three different times. But with my busy schedule and those three times trying to get on it, I was unable to, uh, for the past two weeks.
Okay, I'm, I'm totally confused, so let's back up a few feet.
Sure.
Um, where is the property located?
Uh, Satsuma, uh, Saint John's Riverside Estates Highlands, Section Two. Uh, it's one, it's three hundred feet outside of Satsuma Heights subdivision.
So, you, you have a, you bought a piece of property. There is currently some semblance of a road that goes up to a certain point. And then you need another hundred feet cleared, so we have to create another hundred feet of road to get your property, um, to where you can get access to your property to build, to build a home.
Uh, what I was told by Public Works is I need to fill out a, a permit and bring, uh, and whatever they want, and bring the, the clearing up to their standards. Uh, there's confusion right now from what the Public Works told me that they're maybe not doing, um, where it's an unmaintained road, but if there's an emergency or washout, they will come and maintain it. Um, basically, this.
It's a class two road.
Two, yeah, number two, I'm sorry. Um, this part of it's, you know, it looks like a private road, but it's not. Uh, like I said before.
Who owns the easement on both, who owns the property on both sides of the easement?
Um, uh, Mr. McDaniel's owns, well, there's, there's.
You, you, you don't, you don't own the property on both sides?
No, there's four different people along that road, uh, or easement, or right-of-way is what Public Works calls it, that's public.
Mike? If the county vacated the easement and gave that back to the landowners, what would?
No, that's not.
He wouldn't get it. That, that would land law.
Okay.
This is, this, this is gonna come in front of the, at a workshop at the end of the month.
Oh.
It's, it's basically, it's, uh, well, it's not your specific case. It's, it's the case we're having throughout the county. We have, uh, we're trying to get people vested in, in their properties so they can build, and they can't, if their property is invested, they can't get a, a, a building permit, right? And so, part of the roads, and we have all these roads that have, that have been in subdivisions in the past, and they're unrecorded, and the roads are not open. In this case, the road is not open, uh, to the back part of his parcel where he needs it to be so that he can get vested, so that he can get a, a building permit, right? So, what we're trying to do is, uh, work through the process and say, what do we need to do? Cause we don't know if we can give these guys right-of-way reuse permits so they can clear the road to our standards. And I think we do that, but we have to do that every single time and get approval from, from the board to do, to do that. And so.
Why would that be an issue?
Yeah, that was going through my mind.
I don't think we can, we used to carte blanche say, just, just build it to our standards and then we'll give you a, a road. But I think, uh, once we, once we talked over the planning and zoning and then some other folks, that I think we need to come to you each time this happens, uh, to do that. And so, that was our, that was our plan to discuss this next.
Do you have the means to be able to clear the property? And, and then, and does he have to build the road back to, um, our standards?
Yes, and that's, this is, this is no different than what we've told people in the past, that they wanna build it.
So, if he clears, if he clears the property, he's gonna distribute the soil. He's gotta compact it, bring in lime rock or some kind of stabilization and compact that to our satisfaction, correct?
Correct. It would, the, the, he would open up the road to our standards.
Do you have that, do you have that financial ability?
I do, but what would happen with the road that has already been cleared there for the past seventeen years that Mr. McDaniel's had cleared? It's sand and almost, I've seen her, their daughter's two-wheel Honda go out of it, but she's gotta hit it at a run with the wheel in the center of the road, or else she'll bottom out and get stuck. I use my.
So, we're talking about having to maintain a lot of piece of road, not just.
Now, this is a major problem here in the county that I've seen, and I, I understand you.
I know, but we're talking specifically in your, your case. You're trying to, you wanna build your dream house. I'm trying to help you get there. But, um, it sounds like this is, this is gonna come at a cost. Um, that's where this conversation's going. So, are you familiar with, that we're having a hearing on, or a meeting on this?
I was told that, yes, I, but I was told that today was what this was gonna be addressed, and that's why I came. Because I, my situation, I was told by Public Works wasn't gonna be the main topic, but I wanted it to tether with that. And then when I got here this morning at nine, I was told that it wasn't till the twenty-second, so I went ahead and waited till two before going back home to.
Can you come back on the twenty-second?
Sure.
And, and will we have more answers by then?
No.
I mean, from.
I'm sorry.
No, it's just, uh, that was, the whole general thing of, I'm vesting and getting people their building permit. On an unopened road in the county, how does the county commissioners wanna proceed going down that road? Do they want us to continue issuing just, uh, right-of-way use permits so they can build the road, or do you guys want input every single time? Uh, there's, there's different, different avenues. We discussed this with planning and zoning and some folks not that long ago. And so, we wanna, we just wanna get this cleared up so that we know what we're doing as far as.
He's fixing a bus.
Right-of-way, uh, how, how we wanna, how we wanna do that, uh, cause, you know, we can't open a road. We don't have the, the personnel to do it. So, that's, that's the process we wanna go through.
Okay. You're next, unless you wanna let Turner go, cause he's about to bust.
I'm sorry?
You're, you're next.
Can I be after Turner?
I don't want him bust. Okay.
I'll be after Turner then.
Mr. Turner?
This kinda thing, this ain't aim that you, Mr. Corbin, go stand over there.
You might want.
This kinda thing, this is exactly the kinda thing that just blows me the hell up.
Yeah.
That we got to stand in the way of somebody that's trying to build his place. I think the first mistake you did is go and talk to building and zoning because that's the first mistake you made. I think that you should've used your own thing that you've been doing all these years to try to help the customers and help the people. As far as, I just, and I'm not trying to get on you, Mike, I'm really not. This kinda thing just frustrates me to know in that we got to be an impediment to anybody if we're not protecting the health and the welfare of other citizens. Otherwise, we need to get the hell out of the way. I believe that. I do. And this might be one of them cases, unless somebody can show me where it's hurting somebody for this gentleman to go in and clear our right-of-way to get to his land, unless somebody can show me where that hurts somebody, I don't think he should have to go through nine months of asking this person, asking that person, go to the ZBOA, go back to the Planning Commission. That needs to be a decision that we can make in-house. Unless you can identify how he is gonna harm the county or the citizens of the county by clearing that road to his property, he should be able to go do it without us run, running, jerking him around for three months. And this ain't just you, it's anybody that's in this same situation. I truly believe that. I truly do. And we need to try to do what we can in all aspects of that to, to hurry up the process, help people out, let them develop their stuff that they own. If they're not harming us and they're not harming other citizens, we need to help them any way that we can. Help them. He's not in here today asking us to go build him a road to his house. He's asking us to give him permission to let him go build a road to his house. It's amazing to me that we, that we can't just say, okay, go build your road. I'm good with that. You know, I know, don't think we can today until we get the other information, but we, we've got to start working on that. The county has absolutely, absolutely got to stop affecting people's lives and livelihood because it's inconvenient to the people. I mean, to the people that work here. We've got to stop doing that. Got to stop doing that. So, I'm for anything we can do if we're not harming the county or harming any other citizens to let somebody move forward without jerking anybody around for months. And it's not just your department, Mike. It's also planning and zoning or whatever the case may be. We got to figure out ways to, to fix some of these processes. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, and I didn't bust after all.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, and I, I agree with Commissioner Turner ninety-nine point nine percent. Um, I do think that we need to be out of the way on this one. But years ago, and some of y'all remember, we used to have some conversations with your predecessor about what is the minimum standard of a road looks like. And, um, I have no desire to make it look like a class-one road when it's a class-two road. And, and, and I'm gonna be honest with you, that means a bulldozer moves some trees. He knows that when he gets that. He's not gonna come back here and ask us for lime rock and pavement. That's not what he's wanting to do. So, I think that can be done in-house. I think we need to give you the ability to do that in-house and just say, make it look like the road is there. And if it's a class-one road with clay and all, I get that. And that's what the town of Elarken does. They just make it look like the road that's already there. So, why don't we just go ahead, when we come back on the twenty-second, maybe you can bring those recommendations. And I'm with Commissioner Turner, then we can just say, knock yourself out. Go, thanks for being in Putnam County. Appreciate you wanting to be a taxpayer. Enjoy your life here, and that's what we should be about.
And hopefully, in the future, we can set precedents where you can do it where not like Mr. Corbin had to go through. Maybe the next guy that comes in, yep, no problem. Fill out this paper, let us make sure in our best opinion, we're not hurting anybody by doing this, and let him rock. I mean, that.
Okay, so it'll be the twenty-second. Okay, what was the name of the road again, that you're on?
Uh, North Second Street. And I just humbly ask again if we could possibly even today have me able to fill out that permit. Uh, to tell you the truth, I, I understand what the county, uh, and neighbors have been shot at, have been threatened. But they had their monuments already because I couldn't get a land surveyor out there. He's scheduled there all out three, four months. But they already had their monuments, and I did my trigonometry, and I know where the easement is. Been talking with, uh, Public Works a lot, got a lot of neat information and maps and all kinds of stuff. When I called in September, they said the property was vested, and they said that the, the easement was vested. So, I just humbly ask again if we could, if I was able to, if you guys can say, Mike, hey, give this guy a permit for his easement. I already cleared it. I'm already camping on the land through, um, Planning Department and being compliant and everything, uh, while you guys deal with the larger subject at hand. If not, I'll be back on the twenty-second.
Is there anything at this point, Mike, that would prevent him from being able to go ahead and get a permit, or do you need us to further? You need us to further define? I mean, you don't know of anything that's gonna harm anybody by doing this, do you?
No, uh, the, the, end of that road where he needs to clear out, it was a, was it two hundred feet, three hundred feet, something like that? It's, it's, it's minor, and there's no one lives on the other side. Uh, it's, 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 it's clear. It's clear. And we've, we've looked at it in many ways, so.
So, what has prevented us up to this point from giving him his permit to, to, uh, gain access to his property?
We've discussed it, uh, with, with planning and zoning and, and some other folks, and what we, it was determined was we need to come to the board every, every time. We wanted to, to do this, to, to give a right-of-way use permit to open up a road. Cause it's, it is a public road, you know, so we gotta let you guys decide that, but.
You came, you're done.
You came, you're done. As far as I'm concerned, give him his permit and let him go do what he needs to do.
But you, you need, you need a building permit now, right?
After I get the permit.
So.
But Mike, please bring that back and let us, I mean, go ahead and get this guy his permit if he's not hurting anybody. And as far as I'm concerned, you need to have the authority to make this decision. If you're nervous about it, you can always bring it to the board. But you. But you should have the right to make this decision without going through three months of rigmarole instead of just giving the guy and letting him clear, get into his property. You, you should be able to make that determination.
I think, um, before I came here, I was at the, with the, with the, uh, building official discussing some other things, but, um, I don't know why you would not be allowed to go and submit your permit now with the contingency that you get the, uh, the, the right-of-way use permit. Um, and we just discussed this on several other projects, so, um, maybe, maybe Mr. Suggs can go over there and, and iterate that, um, he'd be allowed to get his permit application in for his building permit, 'cause this is gonna, I'll tell you right now, it's gonna take about six weeks to get your permit.
I understand.
So, at least it can be under review, and then you won't be able to pick it up until this other stuff is satisfied.
No different than a culvert permit, a driveway permit. They make you have it to get your permit.
Yeah, it's just, it's a condition, condition of, and he, maybe he can say you can start building at your own risk, and the condition of a certificate of occupancy is you gotta have a road in, you know, that would help you move along.
With all the research and, and time that I spent with Planning Department, something has changed between September and now, and.
Citizen served.
Uh, they all of a sudden said, we're not sure how to address this. So, they, they put it over to Public Works.
So, what, what, the way, the way you do, if you get with the county administrator, you, you, you proceed at your peril, ask them to allow, to go ahead and do the review?
And they had a meeting and they refused.
Okay, I'm saying now that we've had this meeting, Mr. Suggs can, can tell them that they can, they can at least review it, and then they, they can't issue the permit until other conditions are met maybe, but at least you're in the pipeline and moving along.
Uh, they wouldn't give me my application packet until I got them to do this.
We gotta, we gotta get out of his way.
Give me an application.
They wouldn't give you your application packet?
They refused my application.
I am sorry, sir.
Until after that meeting.
You gotta.
I asked them specifically, can I just review the packet? Do I know what to have?
It's, it's online now. I would encourage you to get done.
So, this, and I'm here.
I can understand them not allowing you to have a permit until things are, but I.
Well, not even the packet, just to review what I need. But Ms. Washington was a great help, and she said, this is what you're gonna need. She went ahead and gave me a verbal list of things, so I got most of that ready and just.
Well, this should get, what we did today should get you on that portion of it. And I, I will ask you something. If you go over there to planning and zoning and you run into an issue that because you didn't have this, or it's not put in yet, they won't give you that, would you call me?
They, they called me and told me this.
I'll give you my card here. Come here and call me if you have another issue with this. There's my commissioner's card. You're, um, you should be able, you should be able to put in your permit right now, today. Even if you don't meet all the criteria, you should be able to put your permit in. They're just not gonna give you, or your application in, they're just not gonna give you a permit until you meet all the criteria necessary.
That's what I.
So, they should be able, you should be able to turn it in. This should be no different than having to get a driveway permit before you put in a culvert going in the land. You have to do it if anybody builds a house. This should be the exact same thing. But you should get that permit, which now we've authorized, and then you should be able to go down there and file for your house down there and start this process. And then you're still gonna have to meet all the criteria like anybody else would meet. But you shouldn't have to, this shouldn't be a holdup to you anymore, and they should take your application. If they won't, call that number on that card.
Going to your office right now.
Okay.
And thank you for more than the three minutes you allotted.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
After you've waited four months, at least we can do.
At least we can do.
Give you three minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wait a second?
Okay, any other, any further public comment? Okay, any, any concerns or comments from the commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, we stand adjourned.